And I'm starting again. So, welcome to the Remote School Committee Meeting. This is our third one. So, I'm going to call the meeting to order. First order of business, as we talked about before, for those of you on the YouTube chat, you're allowed to text in any messages. While we generally do public comment at the beginning, what I'll do is anyone who wants to text a question is allowed to ask it and we will also go back to it. So, even if you missed the first part of the meeting, please just text your question. I'll sort of remind everybody from this point on. I'm going to go to school committee members for reports. I'll go around, sort of round robin. Mr. Oakley, do you have anything to report as you just take a drink and I apologize? Mr. Rob? Okay, Mr. Rob? Ms. Janess?
No.
Mr. Stevens?
Nope.
Mr. Chivononi?
Just thankful that my son who's graduating and all the stuff that's going on at the high school for all the graduates. The things that the staff and everyone is doing is just phenomenal, over the top, and I don't want to cry again. Thank you.
All right. And we, you know, everything, they did a parade today, I believe, that went around the high school. There's also, I believe with every, with the parade, there was a picture of each senior and that was up. And so, it was really nice. I mean, I saw pieces of it on Facebook, so I want to thank everybody. I also want to thank Paul for the video that he sent out to all the, it was an open letter to the senior class. I think for all of us, this week is kind of sad because this is our normal meeting time and next week generally begins Senior Week for us. Between all of us attending events and culminating in graduation, which would have been next Saturday, which we pushed out to August for the time being. So, I want to, you know, I want to acknowledge the difficulties for the families, but no, we're going to try our best to make sure that that happens. There's been lots of different things done in different communities around us and, you know, we wish them well. And as much as we care about our seniors, we also want to mention the other seniors in town, those that go to Bristol Plymouth and Bristol Aggie and all the other schools, Coil and every place like that. And so, we do want to wish them well. So, Sean, unless you have a question up at the top, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent for the superintendent's report. So, you'll see a school committee member leave and the superintendent will join. So, welcome, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. Chair, and thank you to members of the school committee. I too want to chime in on the fact that today's little celebration was great, sort of a primer for things to come. I know that we have some activities coming up in June. We have, next Saturday would normally be their graduation date. We have a parade through town, which is being organized through Chief Joe Perkins and School Resource Officer Sergeant John Graham and Scott Phillips. And other activities coming on, and so, we're looking forward to a lot of those activities. It is difficult to fathom the loss, sort of for these seniors, but they're a resilient group and I think resilience is the word and I think maybe they'll learn from this. I think we all will learn from this experience and well, become better as a result. It's all we can hope. With regard to updates from COVID-19 with the district, we continue to implement our extended learning program. We continue to monitor progress and monitor engagement, monitor student engagement. And where that falls off, we're trying to sort of reach out to those folks and get people involved and continue to do that. We have, when we talked last, at the last meeting, about how many computers or how many textbooks we've handed out as a district, that number is getting very close to 250. It's in excess of 240. At the time, my last conversation with Alan Driscoll, we were at 30 and 35 and I had no idea what the, how the number had ballooned. And I quickly learned the next day that those numbers were getting close to 236 and now they're up towards 240 or over 240, getting towards 250, which is really good. We also continue to hand out an average of over 1,000 meals, grab and go, a week. And we also provide food, for weekend food, which is generously donated by the South Shore Action Council and coordinated through Megan Cork, our Family Resource Center. And many thanks to Rebecca Bagnell and the cafeteria workers. Sean Siciliano is a daily fixture at handing out food, as are Sergeant John Graham and Scott Phillips. Either one or both of them at times, which is, which is a great effort, I think, by our school system. We also have our bus drivers who are bringing food to those that can't make it to the complex to pick up food. We have our bus drivers who, as a district, we continue to pay, but we have them coming in on a rotating basis and bringing food to those folks that cannot access the Berkland, whether it be by a vehicle or walking, et cetera. So, I believe we're delivering to 15 or so students with using that method. So, we continue to move on and move forward here. Today would have been the last day for seniors. That's why we had the celebration and the lap. I think they probably may have wanted to do multiple laps around the high school, but that was precluded by the number of cars that were there and the fact that it was physically impossible. And that was under the direction of Sergeant John Graham, so we certainly thank him for coordinating that. He and the Middleborough Police for coordinating that effort and making sure all the students were safe. I can recall a couple of fender benders as the class of 79 rolled around Middleborough High School. Different times, yes, granted, that was sort of an informal thing. This was more of a formal thing, which was, which was good, I think, and was, it was organized. They got together behind the Berkland and there was very little space behind the Berkland either with all the parking that was out there. So, you know, we live and learn and we'll move forward and we'll go from here. So, if there's any questions with regard to this implementation of the extended learning, I'll certainly answer that. I also want to bring Dr. Melanie Gates in and she's going to talk about a couple of steps that we've taken because through our survey, we've learned that there were people that are have difficulty, having difficulty, whether it be teachers or parents or guardians, having difficulty accessing some of the technology and having difficulty understanding some of the technology. And with a few simple lessons, they put together a couple of toolboxes. So, I welcome, if there are any questions for us on the other end, I'd certainly answer them on the COVID-19 updates. If not, I welcome Dr. Gates into the screen. I see her already there and ask her to speak to those two initiatives with regard to the tech, technology piece. Dr. Gates?
Thank you Superintendent Lynch. Thank you, Mr. Young. It's great to see everyone tonight. Hope we have a robust audience out there in the crowd. I'm going to do a screen share just so I can more intentionally showcase the work that really was spearheaded by many people in the district, but primarily Mr. Sean Siciliano, who has just been vital in many aspects of our district's operations. So, thank you, Mr. Siciliano, for your continued leadership in this area. I'm going to do this screen share. Hopefully, I did that correctly, Sean. So, I'd like to just feature two pieces for you. One is a tech toolbox that we created for faculty and staff. We had deployed a survey to the district just to see what supports people needed in being able to best support our students and families in our extended learning plan. From the feedback solicited about the areas of need, as well as the many educators who volunteered their time to put together live tutorials that were also recorded, we created this tech toolbox that's available for faculty and staff only. But we created this to be able to help our colleagues as they continue to support extended learning for our students and families. We had many volunteers across the district who contributed to this and I'd like to intentionally thank them. Those being Justin Pittsley, Eva Crawford, Vicky Miles, Donna Phillips, Debbie Walgreen, Shauna Maloney, Josh Dyer, Scott Redpath, Don Rothmitch, Heather Camo, and again, Sean Siciliano, who also did some recordings himself and put together many tutorials for folks. In addition to the tech toolbox, we recently launched a parent and guardian help center. This is located under the Students and Families section of our website. You can also see it featured on the district website, as well as out on our social media platforms, where new information will continue to be disseminated to the community. The idea for the Parent and Guardian Help Center again came from Mr. Siciliano. This was derived from feedback gathered through the Elementary Administrative Panel Discussion that was held a few weeks ago now. We had questions that had come in about ST Math and we had some questions come in about Google Classroom. We have some more information that is going to be rolling out in the coming days around literacy supports at the elementary level. And as we are able to continue to create new content, we will be posting it here just so that we can be responsive to the needs of our community. If folks have something of need, a question or need some support, whether you reach out to your child's teacher, to your building administration, or to myself or Sean directly, we'd be happy to do our best to support you in your child's learning. So, I'm going to stop the screen share and just, again, thank Sean for all the work that he's been doing. He's been such a tremendous asset to our district.
And thank you, Dr. Gates. I do want to say that I did happen to watch the elementary video. That was great. And I want to thank all the principals for becoming involved in that. I thought that was a fantastic job. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Gates or the superintendent? I don't see anybody. So, as usual, you've done a wonderful job, Dr. Gates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Gates. I do appreciate it.
Thank you. To team effort, all the way from the top, all the way through the district. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed, and again, kudos to Sean Siciliano for a lot of the work he did on that. And Melanie, Dr. Gates certainly gave him credit for that. He's here in my office helping out with this meeting, as you know. One of the chats I noticed was that there's a lot of background noise. So, if somebody has something going on in the background, if you could mute. But that was, it was a comment that was made on the chat page. So, we'll move on with my report. Sarah Hickey is here today to talk about the FY '20 budget and sort of where we stand with that and we're pretty solid with that right now. But the FY '21 budget is an area of more concern as we go towards next year. You're going to hear about some school systems that are going to be talking about layoffs, et cetera, some pink slips. So, she's here to talk a little bit about that and talk a little bit about a meeting we had the other day with the town manager via Zoom. So, Sarah Hickey, welcome and thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Lynch. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, I can hear you. Great.
Sorry, I'm so used to Zoom where there's a little volume that tells you you're speaking. So, I'm going to be talking about two things tonight. I want to talk about the FY '20. We still haven't reached an agreement with First Student. We're at a virtual impasse with them where we calculated a percentage, a fair percentage of payment based on what they had settled with another district and based on the percentages they had given us for what their costs are and and they refused to even come close to that percentage. And so, we're on hold right now with negotiating with First Student to see if they'll make any progress in their discussions. The tuitions for out-of-district placements, Carolyn Lyons, Director of People Personnel Services, has done an amazing job over the past few weeks of collecting the learning plans from each of the schools and collecting the information about the days that the students were actually in session, doing work. And we've started to send the payments out to those schools for the work that they have, that we verified that they have been doing with us. So, we're in the process of wrapping up fiscal year '20. I don't know if anyone has any questions about that for me.
Sarah, I do have a question because I just want to understand, has First Student come back with a number at all or are they just not? Okay, so they have come back with a number.
So, First Student settled with Silver Lake Regional School District for 75% of the cost and that includes paying drivers. And in all of the data that they've given to the 10 districts that I'm working with, the costs for the drivers and their compensation has ranged between 50.2% to 50.7%. And so, we figure, take 50% off of 75 and you get around 25%. We offered them 24. They countered with 40. We offered 30%. They countered with 40. So, that's, in our view, unreasonable, given that, given the number they've already settled with for Silver Lake.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Brian, go right ahead.
My question is... Can you hear me now?
There was a delay. Yeah, I can. There was a delay. Sorry, Brian.
That's okay. My question is more towards the, we received an email saying that a First Student employee was telling us that they were being, collecting unemployment. So, if they're looking at us to pay their employees, yet they've laid them off, we're paying for nothing then. Excuse me. So, that, my concern would be, why would we pay for them to pay their employees if they're not paying their employees? So, that's just something that I thought was interesting since we had received an email from the public regarding that. And it's their employee, they can do whatever they want, but if they're telling me that they're going to pay their employees, yet they laid them off, a little issue with that. Thank you.
Absolutely. That's, that's what I wanted to get at, Brian, because, you know, I sent the email to everybody that we received. You all saw my response. It's, it's not something that we can really comment on because we don't know why they did what they did. But for somebody to be saying they're paying their employees when we both know. Now, we all know too that they have to pay for the unemployment benefits. That's part of their requirement. So, there's that piece, but it's not at the full rate they would normally pay their staff. So, that, that's a piece that we want. Any other questions for Sarah about 2020?
There was a question online, if you're okay with me taking that. The question was, what is the plan for any unused funds for the year? So, the unused, so, we had a considerable increase in the number of out-of-district placements this year, to which we're actually fortunate that this is happening and we're saving money because we had so many students move in and that put us in kind of a bind this year. So, any end of, any of these unused funds will be going towards those out-of-district placement tuitions. And then, if there's any money left over from that at the end of the year and at the end of the fiscal year in June, we would be prepaying tuitions for next year to hopefully get ahead for those tuitions to, just in case we get another influx of students.
And also, just to be perfectly clear, this is our, what we usually do during end of fiscal year. We prepay especially special ed tuitions because we're allowed to, under the law, we can pay up to 25% of the special ed tuition the previous fiscal year. So, I just, yes.
On top of that, if there were to be any funds left over after that, it would go back to the town and it's called the Turnbacks. It goes into the Turnbacks list and that Turnbacks list, once verified with the Department of Revenue, gets turned into what they call free cash, which is not free. It's monies that weren't expended from accounts from the previous year. And then, that money usually, in the previous years, we've, we've used it to pay certain things in the September town meetings that we put off from the spring town meeting. But that's what happens with any money. It goes right back to the town after we pay our pieces. There's always that option of putting it into that other fund that we created, but at this point in time, with what's going on in our, and I know our budgets are tight moving forward, I don't see that as something, as an option.
And through you, Mr. Chair, that's basically what we are doing, is this money will go to pay special education tuitions, which is what that account was created for. But we'll be able to prepay some of that before next year. So, that will free up some of the operational money for next year. So, maybe because, as you know, the budget was extremely tight this year. It did involve eliminating some positions and we're looking to certainly not affect class size. That's our, that's our number one goal, certainly. And survive the year financially. We think we're in a good place to do that, so.
Thank you.
Question from Meg about, the question was about what happens if we don't agree with First Student. First of all, we haven't paid First Student any money since March. And we would have to come up with an agreement to pay them any money because right now, we are not sending them any money. So, they, like, like Sarah had mentioned, she and a group of other business administrators are working with First Student and trying to be fair about things and have offered them something that's, we feel is an adequate deal and they feel it's 40%. We think it's 30%. And we told them the last time, I believe, Sarah, and I don't want to quote you, but the group, including Middleborough, sent them a note saying, "Final offer." And we'll see. We have not heard back from them because we said 30, "Final offer." They said 40 and then we haven't heard back from them. So, if they don't come back to us, then we don't pay them. We have a deal.
And to be clear about that, one of the first things I did in March was go through the bus contract with our legal team. And I was assured by our legal team that the contract was written as a performance contract and we are required to pay them for the days they roll the buses. So, we have no obligation to pay anything at this point. However, we do recognize that they do have costs for leases on buses and insurance and they're still employing maintenance workers and performing maintenance and routine inspections with the vehicles so that if we needed them on Monday to start rolling buses, they'd be available. So, we're not required to pay them anything. The only reason why we're discussing with them payment is because we want them ready to go again when it's time for them to be ready to go again.
So, also to be clear to Sarah, we will have paid First Student in March for everything they did in March. For example, we sort of shut down, I believe it was the 14th or thereabout, so there's still several days in March that they would have rolled the buses. And again, it's a fee-for-services contract, meaning that if you provide service, it's a fee, the same way as if we're not, for example, paying additional dollars during April vacation if we didn't have an April vacation because the buses aren't running then.
Right. Correct.
Mr. Chair?
So, if they're... Start off with the go ahead, excuse me.
Sorry. Question for you, Sarah. You mentioned a little bit of the work that Carolyn Lyons is doing about collecting IEPs and figuring out number of days. Number in the classroom, is to have a similar situation where we can only pay for what was used?
I'm sorry, Rich. You broke up during that question. I heard the beginning and the end of it.
Basically, about out-of-district placements, is Carolyn Lyons doing this, almost the same thing that you're doing with First Student, but with, with those? Are we attempting to only pay for what we used?
It's a little bit different with the out-of-district tuitions in that we received a letter from the state. I can't remember the acronym for the, the piece of the government, but we received a letter that said, "If they're providing services to the students, then we're required to pay." And so, I, I liked that very first bit of it, the "if." And so, we, I had asked Carolyn to help me in determining what were the days that they were requiring services. So, Carolyn just texted me, OSD, or the Operational Services Division. They sent the letter, "If services are provided, then we should pay." And so, my question was, did, when did they provide the services? And then, the second piece of it was, what services did they provide? So, she has been diligently collecting, as I said, education plans, the individualized plans for each student and what it is that the schools are doing. And as she's been getting that information to me, I've been taking the invoices and giving them to accounts payable and getting those paid for. So, it's a different scenario. It's not that we're saying we're going to pay a portion of it. We're just, we need the documentation that they're doing the work before we pay for the work.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a follow-up?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair.
I just wondered, I don't want to put you on the spot about that, the specifics, but I just wondered, from what you've been seeing so far, are we close to 100% of out-of-district placements receiving continuous service? Or are we seeing some evidence that some are not?
I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have the answer to that. And that would be something I will talk to Carolyn about and she and I can get back to you. I'm more just processing the bills as they come through and making sure that we have the backup. Hang on, I'm getting another text from her again. She said yes to your question. Continuous service for all placements.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any questions? About 2020, before we move on to next fiscal year. All right. Then Sarah, I'm going to turn it back over to the superintendent because it is his report.
Okay. And I'm going to just explain that our next item on the agenda is to go to Sarah to talk about a phone conversation we have with the town manager. He contacted us late last week and asked to be with us Tuesday morning, which we zoomed in with him Tuesday morning at 10:00 AM. And he, quite frankly, had a couple of asks of us. One is to, let's look at the full budget. If we were to take off 2%, 5%, or 10%, what would those numbers look like? Of the $34,794,000 in our budget. And the second piece was, would the school department be willing to speak to our unions about possibly looking at the contracts and looking at possibly not taking a 2% raise, which every unit has? All of our six units are scheduled for a 2% raise. So, that was the second ask. So, and I believe strongly that needs to be something that the school committee needs to hear about, discuss and approve me going forward with that ask. So, I'll hand it back over to Sarah.
What I will start with is that Town Manager Nunes came to us in the Zoom meeting with a difficult conversation in that no one really knows what's happening with budgets for next year. So, but everyone has this big gray cloud of potential doom hanging over their head. And so, Mr. Nunes gave us a directive to do some calculations for potential things. So, one of the things he had asked was, what is the cost for the 2% pay increase for all of our six unions? So, that would be about $1.7 million was budgeted for the increases for next year. And then, he also asked, what is the, the, what would be 2%, 5%, and 10% of the appropriation for next year? And so, I would like to commend Superintendent Lynch's math earlier, but so, 2% would be $675,896. 5% is $1,689,732. And 10% is $3,379,464. So, those are numbers that, that Mr. Nunes would like from me. And Superintendent Lynch and I felt that this was an appropriate discussion for school committee.
Rich, you're muted.
Sorry about that. It's not as, you're not able to see it as much as Zoom. I'll say that upfront. So, the point of discussion tonight is, so, we've approved the budget. We sent a budget over. I also believe that the selectmen have approved our budget. I could be incorrect with that, but I think, I think that was what happened. So, tonight is allowing them to take that piece and send it over to, just number-wise. There really can't be a discussion tonight about what we cut because the budget subcommittee has to sit down and look at everything, make recommendations. It has to go back to everybody here and have recommendation made. I mean, clearly, we'd listen to what the superintendent and what the business manager are telling us, along with administration. I do want to point out several things to the committee, which I think are important. First and foremost is this, as of this moment, we have no idea what school's going to look like in the fall. You know, CDC has set out a guideline about what school should look like. And that's the only document that we've seen that, that outlined. Now, again, that document's based on, as I understand it, if school was to open today, this is the way a school should look like. this is the way a school should look like. Um, we know there's a working group, um, with the Department of Ed that has several members of, um, it has some school committee members, it has some, uh, I believe it has members of, uh, I know it has superintendents, and it has a wide variety of membership looking at what um, is gonna be the recommendations for Massachusetts when it opens in the fall. Um, there was an article, I believe, yesterday or the day before in the Globe about that Subcommittee.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I could, this is the article, if you can see it. And and there, I just want to mention the fact that that Middleborough is part of the article, because if you look at the school buses, those are our Middleborough school buses from First Student. So we we did make the Globe yesterday, but that article is in the Globe, and it does quote the governor, it does quote the commissioner, and it does also quote, uh, the chairman of, the Secretary of Education, James Pizer, so.
And the the piece that they were very clear about was that those recommendations aren't coming out soon. Um, they're still working them out, still vetting them, still having conversations, so we don't know that. So the potential exists that I understand the conversation about the cuts, but their potential exists, if you look at some things that they're looking at, that it could cost us more money in the long run to run the school than we've even budgeted for next year. So I just bring that up to the committee. I also make mention of that we're not gonna do this in a bubble, um, you know, as we have in the past. Um, we've brought in the administrators to come sit with us as the Budget Subcommittee to have conversations. Um, to look at what could be and won't be on the table, uh, because we really take their input. And that's important. Um, so I'm gonna open it up for questions for everybody, if that's okay.
I would, uh, Mr. Chair, if I could, I just want to say, we don't know what Chapter Seven funds are gonna look like. We don't, we're not sure. We don't have any numbers yet. So those numbers have not been sent out yet. We don't even know if we can have a summer program yet. That that information has not been sent out yet. Uh, so there's a lot of question marks, a lot of information. And there's some disinformation out there, but the information, the latest from the commissioner, which is contained in that article, is we're gonna, we're excited about the possibility of schools opening in the fall, but, you know, the chair mentioned uh, the CDC guidelines, and they they sort of design classrooms, and they show you classrooms, and they show you furniture that Middleborough doesn't have. We do not have the furniture that's designed in those classrooms that they have for social distancing. We have traditional desks, so that's a totally different piece. Uh, and there are other pieces that are involved, but, uh, uh, so just, people have to keep that in mind as we look forward. Uh, and James Pizer in the same article said, we should plan for remote learning because that that may be the standard for the fall. Uh, so there are a lot of, lot of questions at the state level uh, between the governor, the commissioner, and the Secretary of Education, going back and forth, and that is sort of projected out to superintendents and so, and then you look at PPE equipment and what we're looking at for that too, so.
And just one more thing, which everyone knows, which is that, you know, we started the school year, um, for us, it's July first, with an understanding of what the budget was gonna be, and then we had additional move-ins that cost us a considerable amount of money in our special ed line items, uh, because they moved in with pre-existing placements, uh, that we had to honor, and it cost us an additional million dollars with those placements. Um, and so those are pieces that we have to take into consideration, and clearly, um, you know, we're not budgeting for extra um, things that we don't, whether we know or don't know are gonna happen. Um, and I would remind everybody too, that the way this process happens is this process begins in January and finishes in some point in February, so we can comply with town meeting deadlines for the town. So we're almost six months out from our initial discussion on these numbers. So I think that's important too.
Um, Mr. Chair, I think Greg Rowe was first, though.
Go ahead, Greg.
Oh, you're muted.
You're muted, Greg. See, it's not just me.
It's not true for you. Um, thank you, Rich. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would just want to know, how does this relate to our town meeting? Like you said before, we prepared for the town meeting in April. Now, with the town meeting pushed back to sometime in June, how much clearer is the picture really gonna get over the next few weeks? Because that seems to be the biggest issue is no one knows what's gonna happen. I don't think anything is gonna become clear before July. So what are we going into town meeting with? Are we gonna say, you know, these are the different budgets, or are we gonna give them the budget we approved already, or what what goes on with that?
So, so that's the conversation tonight. Um, town meeting has to approve a budget. Uh, they have to give us a number to work with now. I I think if you look at it from the town perspective, you could say, well, we're gonna start off with a lower number and see how the summer goes and have a special, uh, because if you think about it, just from a townwide perspective, the vast majority of our money is not spent in July and August. So even if we, we, whatever amount we'd be given, there's still a two-month cushion there for the most part, because our salaries really aren't coming online until the end of August, early September. So, so that's one particular piece. I don't know. I mean, I wasn't part of that conversation either, Greg, and I don't know, nor have I seen any conversation about town meeting. Now, there is a conversation on Monday night, Selectman's meeting um, on their agenda. So I don't know if that will be part of this discussion. Um, but I just, um, I don't have a lot of answers for you, Greg, as far as that goes, other than town meeting has to give us a number. And then we have to, at some point, reconvene and work that number out. Uh, Mr. Oakley, you had a question, sorry.
Yeah, I guess it's it's a tough one. I don't see what the answer really is, but obviously, we've been asked for, I think I heard it, was it a two, a five, and a ten? Um, something like that. Since I think most school districts probably have a similar scenario where the majority of their budget is salaries, and the very real concern with going back to school is social distancing. Um, it would seem that any cut in salary would be contrary to any attempt to, you know, reduce classroom size. And I just wonder, what type of metrics will we be providing along with these scenarios to the town manager? Will it be like, okay, five percent budget cut, classroom sizes go up to X, Y, and Z? Are we just giving numbers, or do we have some sort of like, this is the impact to students that we'll be providing with it?
So, Rich, just to be clear.
I would certainly answer that by just saying that we've been asked just simply for numbers right now. The Budget Subcommittee and the School Committee would look deeper. We would work with administrators to determine what, then, what the next step would have to take. If we're told we have to cut a million dollars out of our budget, or seven hundred thousand dollars out of our budget, then we need to take the next steps. Uh, that's the whole idea. But like I said, we don't know Chapter Seventy yet. Uh, we don't know what the big outlook is for next year. We don't know what state, we know state revenues are down. We're not sure, gonna be sure how that's reflected in our budget. We know there's a lot of money that's been put through the the, um, Foundation Budget Review Committee that's put in place, where there's a whole bunch of money going to a whole lot of cities. In fact, is that that number I've given you before is eighty-five percent of that Student Opportunity Act, it's called. That money's going to thirty-five communities. Whether that goes first, and whether we remove that money first and go back to square one with regard to money for all the rest of the towns, uh, we really don't have an idea on that. A lot of this, a lot of the regional school systems have been told by the state that they're gonna be looking at one-twelfth budgets and going a month at a time with funding from the state. Uh, that that's a different municipal, regional school systems are different than municipally-owned school systems. Uh, so they can handle those things differently. We have to handle it the way our town handles it, and and I, we're fortunate that we have a town manager who is uh, versed in municipal finance, which is good. And hopefully, he'll work with us and realize that we're a, we're a human resource industry. Between any, on any given year, between eighty-two and eighty-five percent of our budget goes directly to the people that work for us. Uh, and that's, that's the big deal here, is that that if we're gonna cut money, it comes down really to people at this point, because as the Budget Subcommittee knows, uh, we went through a painstaking sort of plan this year, uh, where we tried to avoid the classroom as much as we possibly could. Uh, we had to cut some positions, but we didn't cut any classroom positions. Uh, but there's no guarantee with with moving forward. If we're given numbers like this, then we are talking about personnel cuts. There's no doubt about it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, with regards to, one of the numbers that Sarah, you were able to give us, was the, uh, the the cost increase on the contracts uh, across our six contracts at one point seven million dollars. Does that include, uh, steps, lane changes as well in that number, or is that a separate piece of that?
That includes steps and lanes.
Okay.
So one point seven million is steps, lanes, and the two percent.
Okay. Um, I know the state could probably save two billion if they eliminated the South Coast Rail, but I I can't say anything about that, but that'd be a two billion dollars savings. They've already spent a billion on it, so they could save the other two. I'm sure one of the selectmen would love that. But, uh, the other, the other point would be, looking at the the two, the five, and the ten. I mean, I absolutely think we need to give the, give, give the information and and really take a, take a hard look at those. Um, and what the possibility would be within our district, in our classrooms, our classroom sizes, administration. And 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 for me, I would not want to cut, there's just certain things I wouldn't want to cut, and I know we don't want to talk about cutting things, but if that's, if we start looking at numbers, I don't want to cut anything. Uh, I I would try to do everything in our powers to maintain the services, the curriculum, the, um, curriculum outside of the the three Rs, um, that we have. I don't want to, and I know everyone feels this way. So, I mean, I just think that um, I saw something today that someone posted, and it made, I understand certain communities outside of Massachusetts are already cutting all the good stuff, all the fun stuff, and I don't want to cut the fun stuff. Um, it's all fun, but let's, uh, let's, we start looking at this, I mean, I I know the classroom sizes, but we really need to not start cutting the stuff that, uh, makes, uh, makes our our students think, um, think, dream, and think beyond, um, just what is being, you know, taught with math or writing or or other items. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, um, just to be clear, that these are numbers, uh, again, that we're just, um, giving to the the, um, town manager what the numbers would be. Uh, the other piece I want to make clear to everyone is this, that we will come before this committee with what those numbers mean as far as cuts to the programs and cuts to positions. Uh, because, uh, it's not only for your benefit, but it's also for the benefit of the townspeople who who will decide what our budget is. Um, and that's the piece I want to remind everybody, the town meeting decides what the budget is. Um, and so there, I I'm not gonna walk into town meeting without them seeing um, what the budget's gonna look like. But the piece I want to caution everybody, um, because I've seen it in the past, and it hasn't happened with us and won't happen with us. If we go through that budget and say X is gonna be cut if we don't receive X amount of funding, those are gonna be cut. Because, and and Mr. Jimononi can attest, in the past, we've seen um, school departments put out numbers that were fictitious, and when it came time to cut, all of a sudden, they figured out money in order to save certain positions and things like that. And that's unfair to to the taxpayers when we go to town meeting, to not get the right information and not know what's gonna be out there when it happens. So that's the piece I wanted to let you on.
Mr. Chair, you yourself and and the work that the Subcommittee has done, and and over the past few years has really, um, the the Budget Subcommittee has really blossomed. It's a hard amount of work that you guys, and you put a lot of work into this and and with the administrators, and that's, uh, uh, I know that you'd have that transparency to the people and the honesty, which is, uh, like you said, the things that we're really looking for is to tell the people what what education will look like in Middleborough. Um, and I understand that these are hard times. We we're all seeing hard times right now. Um, Studs Terkel didn't have a hand on this one, but, um, there's hard times, and and I, when I think of three point four million dollars worth of cut, then I just, it's astounding. How do you cut ten percent of your services? It's just almost an impossible thing. When I think about only being able to potentially put thirteen kids on a school bus next year to get them to school. It's crazy.
Yeah, that's, that's an important piece through you, Mr. Chair. Even, Brian, I haven't touched on that, but that's sort of the reality of it, that if we adhere to the current social distancing numbers, we're talking about twelve students on a seventy-two-passenger bus. Perhaps doubling our buses, which we just simply can't afford, simply can't afford. Um, you know, our transportation, you know our transportation numbers uh, and to social distance on buses. So we'd be looking at, looking at a mile and a half, we'd be looking at all those things, asking parents to drive. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of complicated what-ifs here that we need, will need to work out, and as an administrative team, we'll continue to work and and figure out what next year's gonna look like, uh, even, you know, with, sort of assuming that we're gonna be there, but also assuming we're gonna be doing remote learning, so.
Right, and and, you know, the other piece that I want to make everyone clear about, I mean, part of the things that people are looking at, one of the things they're looking at is no buses at all. Um, it being that bus, the bus for regulars, uh, schools is over for the fall. Um, that's one of the pieces that they've started looking at. Now, whether that happens or not, I don't know, but that's a a piece on the table, so that that's what I want to make sure everyone's aware of too. That as we discuss making these cuts, we have no idea what to expect for the fall right now. You know, we've all heard bits and pieces of what it might look like, but we have no idea what our responsibility is going to be to do in those school systems, in those individual schools. So that's important too.
Mr. Chair, do you, do you want us to make a motion to authorize the transfer of this information to the town manager? Is that what you're looking for? Or just, uh, or is it just a group of us, us, and a meeting saying, go for it?
No, I I think, so there's two parts. One is to authorize the, uh, piece. Um, and the second revolves around the second about asking the union, so we're gonna take that separately, because I have a couple of questions about that.
I I would make that motion about sending the information to the town manager and working with the town manager on these budget items.
And again, it's just a number, um, Brian, at this point.
Yep, I'll second that.
Okay, um, I, I, so, Greg and Meg, I know you haven't had, you were sort of in the backstage fun area. Um, so I want to make sure your questions are answered. So do you guys have any particular questions, Greg, right ahead?
Well, I don't have a question, but, uh, I think there's so many unknowns here, I think I agree with everybody else, that he's asking for numbers, but we cannot just start taking scenarios in. Like you said, we have to sit down with all the people. We usually sit down with the Budget Subcommittee. It takes months to do that, so I'm okay with sending numbers over, but we can't have discussions on what, what they mean. Thank you.
Thanks. Meg, do you have anything?
No, Greg basically just said everything. I I would agree with everything he said.
That's great. I'm just sending a, Sean, do any of the administrators have any questions? I want to, um,
Do you, Mr. Chair?
Please, Greg.
Um, my concern is, and you brought it up at the beginning, um, the idea that we may be deciding to stay remote to save money for the rest of the year, that is a very big concern to me, that they have put us in a position where it's like, okay, we can cut money here, but if we start in January, that's gonna be saving money, and I don't know if that's right for the students in Middleborough. And I'm not sure, is that our decision to start? Is it the state's decision to start? Like, how does this play out? And kudos to the Subcommittee. You guys did a ton of work cutting down to where it is now. And now, if this goes to the town, you're gonna have to do three times the work in half the time?
Yeah, exactly. So just to be clear, um, it is not our decision to start remotely in any way, shape, or form. It would be, it would be the states. So the scenarios that, um, I know this Globe article talks about, and they briefly mentioned in there, the scenarios start out with the idea of starting remotely. The idea is also starting with, um, alternating, uh, days. Half the kids go remotely, half the kids come in, half the kids, uh, do remote, et cetera, et cetera. It just rotates through the week. Uh, mainly because they don't like the concept of kids out of school for weeks at a time. So it wouldn't be one week remote, one week in school. That's not a scenario they're looking at. So, but the the piece that I want everyone to know is, having gone through this budget, when we take out additional monies, whatever those monies are, they're coming out of staffing. Uh, because we've gone through, um, you know, the idea of, you know, just the basics, which is, you know, we'll cut all of, um, supplies. We can't do that. We know we need supplies. We know supplies have to be there, those type of things. A school needs to run on paper. Everyone knows that, needs to run on copy machines for Everyone knows that. Needs to run on copy machines for a variety of things. So it isn't like you can dump those type of things. And again, with 85% of your money invested in staffing, you don't have a lot of wiggle room to do something else with it. Um, and I agree with Brian. I mean, you know, there are other districts and it's not just our in outside of Massachusetts, there are other districts in Massachusetts right now, wholesale cutting programs, uh, essentially arts and music, which to me is ridiculous. Uh, because that's an opportunity for kids uh, to learn in other ways. And I'll I'll add too, that I think, given the situation that we're in and the kids having gone through, I think arts and music are really important right now, uh, especially for those kids. So it it's hard. I mean, I I got to be honest with you.
Yeah.
I I recognize it's just numbers to be given to the superintendent, to the town manager, but it bothers me deeply and cuts me to the core because I know what those numbers are going to, you know, in my mind, mean for for staffing. And we've sort of looked at different things and and gotten buy-in from everybody. And I was very proud of meeting with the uh, principals and all the administrators and going over sort of, and Meg can talk about it, we went over nickels and dimes with them to try to cut everything as best we can. Um, you know, there was no sum of money that was too small to look at because in the end, it all adds up. Um, you know, we'll continue to do that, but it's not, you know, it's going to touch staff. It has to, given the amounts they want. And, you know, I can't tell you what it's going to look like if it's at the $3 million level. I'll tell you that right up front. So, you know, I say that, I understand, um, I understand why the ask is there. And again, I think Bob is asking because of the unknown. And my guess is he's asking all the town departments the same question. Show me what this looks like. Show me what that looks like. It may not be what he really wants because I think to some extent, he'd he'd like to see what the cuts are, but we're not gonna we, you know, we can't do that now. Um, you got the ask on Tuesday, met with you tonight. It's not going to happen that way. And it's it's going to have school committee buy in, you know, with what whatever it is, and you're going to see it. And so if it is a scenario that we're talking about, I'm going to tell you exactly what the 2% cut looks like, what a 5% cut looks like, and what a 10% cuts looks like. Because I can't have you go on budgets that you don't understand what the bottom result of those budgets are. Any questions about that? Greg? And you're on mute, Greg.
There we go. Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would just like to know, has he approached all, like we talked about our six units we bargain with. Has he approached police, fire, and the other departments as a whole? Um, to see what they're thinking or what what's going on there, or is it up to each oversight committee to kind of do it on their own?
So, um, just to be clear, um, my understanding is he's gone to all town town departments and asked for these similar cuts. Um, I do want to, um, I I want to get back to that that piece about going to the unions. Um, in a minute, because this is a separate category, because I'll explain what my thinking on that. But the other piece with that is the vast majority of the other units are um, run through the select the selectmen have control over those contracts. Um, I believe with the exception of G and E. Um, and pretty much, obviously, with the exception of everything in the schools, everything else is can is done through the selectmen's office. And that's part of the reason um, why I added Bob to our negotiating committee was because um, those contracts have, for the most part, been in line with everything else in town because, you know, there's always been that disconnect. And um, I don't want that disconnect because I don't want the town to understand what we're doing. And I want to understand what the town's doing. So we're do, so our employees are treated exactly the same. So that makes sense, Greg? That answer your question? So any other, any other questions about the just giving the figures at 2, 5, and 10?
Mr. Chair, that was that was any, and that was also any additional figures that the town manager would need?
Right. So, yeah, exactly. So if he asks for a five or seven, a seven or a three, that's fine. That makes sense. Thank you, Brian. Um, seeing no more discussion on that, I'm going to go in a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Rowe.
Now, just to be clear, this is just Sarah giving the numbers and that's it.
Yes, uh, this says no cut has been made, uh, nothing, uh, just, and to be even more clear, Greg. Right now, um, as you guys know, so that the Sarah presents at the town meeting and so that the superintendent and I do the backup, if we have any questions or are needed, right now, the only vote you've taken is to give the budget that we've agreed to to go forth before town meeting.
Okay.
So I would need a change in the school committee vote to change that number at all.
And this does not do that?
That does not do that. All it is offering is what those numbers would look like.
Okay.
Okay?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And Mr. Jimononi?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, as I said, just for the purpose of giving numbers. Um, and now the second thing, um, is he asked us to have a conversation with the union. Um, what I would like to be clear with everybody is I need to have a conversation with Mr. Nunes because, as Mr. Jimononi knows, uh, there has been problems in the past when people have asked unions to forego raises. Um, some have foregone the raise and others have just put it off. So I need I I before I, I'm going to ask, as I have for some leeway to have conversations. Uh, but uh, more importantly, I want to understand what the ask is going to be, if that makes sense. I know it makes sense to Mr. Jimononi because he's he's lived through it. Um, so it's just the opportunity to have the ask um, and go from there. If it involves negotiation, then I will bring the negotiating subcommittee together and do it from there and and see what parameters I need later on to have the conversation. I've been asked to have a, we've been asked to have a conversation. Um, so I feel obligated to have that conversation. Um, where that goes uh, is up to it, all that is is a conversation. It is not what's going to happen because I need to come back to this committee to make that happen.
And Mr. Chair, I would move that we um, start to have that conversation with both Mr. Nunes, who's part of our negotiating team, and our six unions.
Yep. Do I have a second?
Right.
Discussion. If that makes sense, Greg, I know with some of uh, Mr. Rowe, some of the questions you had had earlier. So that's why I wanted to scope it that way. I again, is it a true ask of giving up or is it an ask of delaying? Those are the pieces that I want to make sure we're 100%. Because I want to, again, if, you know, part of setting this up this way was always to make sure that our employees were treated as fairly as everybody else. I don't want different asks to go to different people. That's primarily. Okay, uh, any questions or comments about that particular piece? Hearing none. I'm going to go through a roll call vote. Mr. Jimonovi?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Switching it up on us. I'm I as well.
And Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. And so I'm going to go back to the superintendent because it still is his um, report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, members of the committee, I just want to finish off by saying that we did we hear, we did receive a request from a parent through our central office regarding the band trip. And I'm talking with Mr. Brandigan, uh, those checks are going out tomorrow for the return on the money from the band trip. That travel agency was very good about, I think, giving back 90% of the cost of that trip, I believe is the number. Not sure exactly, and please don't quote me on it, but uh, I think it was it was a healthy number, which was good. And I those checks are going out tomorrow. All that money is handled through the activity account at the high school. Uh, and uh, and Mr. Brandigan, in a conversation with him prior to this meeting, has assured me that those those checks will be sent out tomorrow. So just an update on that, and that would conclude my report for the evening.
Any questions to superintendent before he goes? Well, not before he goes, but before his report ends. Um, seeing no one, um, I'll move on to consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Um, discussion on the consent agenda. All it is is warrants. Um, I did sign those and um, they were not as big as they've been lately, so it's uh, goddamnable. Um, so it requires a roll call. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Jimononi?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, we're going to go into MSBA update. Um, so Brian, do you want to start or you want me to start?
Uh, you can start.
Okay, so um, the biggest thing about the um, the the high school building project is this is going to be delayed. Um, it will not add additional money to the it, the money is not going over budget. I want to emphasize that. Um, part of the delay has to do with requirements around COVID-19. Um, so we can have, we have to have less people on site. Um, those people need to be spaced out more. Um, and so for that reason, it means less um, less people at the work site, um, so it's going to delay the project. Um, we had hoped to get the project at some point in November and then go through um, and be ready for the move in after December, the winter holiday and start right in January. It looks like we will move kids into the new high school um, in after February vacation. Uh, because that'll give time for the custodial staff to do what they need to do. It'll give time for that. Um, it will require a couple of things of us. Um, it'll require us to redo the school calendar for next year uh, because we created a large break for the winter season. Um, the reason we're not doing that right away is quite frankly, again, we're going to look at what's going on with the school. Um, uh, Brian and I had an initial conversation, which is, if you if you will, it may make sense to delay the start of school a little bit at the, you know, if we pick up those extra days at Christmas time and move them someplace, it may make sense to just delay the start a little bit rather than to, for example, move them before um, February vacation or move them anyplace else, just because what we need to do to get ready and all that other kind of stuff. So that will come as soon as we can. But again, I think we're going to need um, a better understanding of what school's going to look like in the fall and what we're expected to do in order to uh, make a decision on the calendar. Um, so Brian, did you want to add anything else about that particular piece?
Um, the COVID-19 response piece is uh, is costing, it's cost about $12,500 a week. It was originally thought to be a little bit more than that, but there was some upfront cost originally in there. Uh, so it's it's $12,500 per week in response. Um, and we've projected that out, uh, our our OPM, um, she's project, Christie projected it out for the entire project. And it's a substantial amount of money that um, we're carrying currently in our contingency. Uh, I say our contingency, the MSBA, the Middleborough School Building Committee's contingency. Um, and hopefully, we can get some reimbursement out of some of the COVID-19 money that is in the Plymouth County system. So we're looking, I know we're looking at that right now as well. Um, one of the items on the construction piece, and I see it myself personally on a day in and day out basis, something as simple as no sharing of tools on on a job site. Everyone has a shovel. Everyone has a hand. They they can't share anything at this point. And that's really slowing, even I'm seeing it on stuff that I do. So it's slowing things down because you can't handling a chain, one person can only do certain things. One person can only get in a piece of equipment. So we're seeing those delays across the board. Um, and I'm thinking that they're they're going to be good on their schedule, though. I think that that February date is going to be a good a good projection. I don't think they would float February at us if they if they thought it was going to be April. Um, or could be April, but it still could be. Um, I don't look forward to uh, oh, I won't be here when you have to redo the calendar in September. Sorry, I I had to throw that out there, but uh.
I'm hoping to get it done before the end of June, Brian, so you might be.
That's fine. That's fine. Um, I I I understand that. I I've been looking at the calendar too. So I I got to say that the project's still moving forward. We gave them the parking lot as if you go on the website and you look at the the camera, you can see they're working that parking lot. Um, the the old, what we we call the art or the bus lobby parking lot. They're working as they got it earlier because they were supposed to get it after June 6th. Now they have it now. So um, things are things are moving on the project still. So thank God that that's still moving on. And hopefully, it'll continue to move on the way it is and maybe even start to pick up speed as we come out of this thing, um, hopefully soon.
Yeah, so the other thing I I just related to that, and obviously on the project, anything extra that uh, cost us with the project or anything extra that we've done this school year in order to um, have to handle because of COVID. Um, Sarah's put all those numbers together and it is going to apply for reimbursement for those numbers. Um, so I think that's important to note. Um, oh, something's going on.
The the school building project, as you can see in the in the uh, the the video right there, that whole parking lot is now gone. Um, the parking lot used to be there with the with the arrows pointing in the front of the building. So there's a pile of processed gravel that was all ground up there. Um, they're leveling and and putting in parking that they're they're ahead of they're ahead ahead of them scheduled on that piece. Um, but luckily, that's outdoor work. And as you can see, that's the band wing right there. That's the band room. Mr. Pitchley's waving, I think, right there at us as well as the auditorium and the gymnasium in the far end. Uh, so that the project is uh, I go to it every day and look at it. It's one of those things I do when the sun's coming up. Because I have nothing better to do except I look at that stuff. Uh, and it's great to see the progress is being made.
Yeah, um, I'm going to ask Mr. Lynch to come in to see if he had anything else he wanted to add.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just sort of expand on what you've said with with regard to the lot of planting going on right now. Mountain view landscaping is in there. Uh, doing a lot of mature tree planting. Uh, as folks know, the as part of the project, we did go forward and we have some more mature trees in some areas uh, that we decided to to put in as a result of of uh, sort of trying to frame out the building, if you will. And that's going on. There's there's planting going along the sidewalk, the promenade, if you will, Mr. Brandigan's promenade or sidewalk going over to the stadium. Um, there's irrigation work going on the fields outside and they're setting that irrigation. Uh, they're assessing the soil that's been sitting there over the winter um, and determining whether or not that's soil is acceptable right now. And we have an excellent landscape architect, landscape designer uh, named David Warner from Warner and Larson, who is persnickety, uh, which is to our advantage, as far as I'm concerned. And I know that Rich and Brian are on that committee and and have responded positively to him because he's he's got our back when it comes to making sure that everything is done right. Uh, he's going through the punch list for the fields right now, and there's some fencing issues. There's some issues in front of shortstop and third base in the varsity baseball field where the rise is is a couple inches too high, and that needs to be straightened out. So, like I said, he's going through a punch list that's pretty uh, pretty intricate. And we've taken delivery of a gator now, which will be the attendee for the the uh, mechanical attendee for the turf area. And we've also just taken delivery on uh, the mowing units, uh, 48 to 62 that are coming in to take care of the fields, which includes bagging because of the the turf field, the sod field requires bagging. So uh, there are a lot of advances outside as well as inside. Uh, if you haven't tuned in, Rob DeRozia and Adam Pelletier, uh, with the help of Sean, uh, put in their latest episode. If you haven't seen that, check it out. And I know they'll have another episode coming out in June. So uh, just tune in if you will. The live streams are on our website all the time. There are obviously two site, two uh, cameras on that building at all times. And we try to provide time lapse. Some sometimes it gives you some some perspective. Because if you go by like Brian does, and Brian G does, he said he goes by every day. I go by every day. Uh, sometimes you, I don't notice too many changes today, but if you look at the time dates and the timestamps when those videos come out, you really, really notice it. And it's it's something that's pretty astounding. Um, and although it's going to be a little bit late, we our our intention is to get that senior class in and and have them graduate from that high school. And and that continues to be the intent of the school district and the committee. So um, if there's any other questions, I'll certainly help to answer those.
Questions, anybody?
Uh, Rich, I don't know if you noticed, uh, Sarah may did comment that uh, they are applying for that reimbursement for that COVID $100,000.
Yes.
Yes, we've been work, Christie Murphy has been working with Bob Nunes and Sarah, and uh, it's one of those grants that's sort of reimbursable. You have to prove you spent the money. So we're working with the Fontaine Brothers to get the money that they've spent on the additional help, the additional cleaning stations that they put in, the additional hot water stations that they put in, the soap stations and. the additional cleaning stations that they put in, the additional hot water stations that they put in, the soap stations. And um, so we're applying for reimbursement. I did notice that the Plymouth County Commissioner is uh, the head of the Plymouth County Commission is, is also an OP and has been on building committees and handover and um, is somebody that uh, hopefully understands what we're going through and what kind of a kink this would put in the works and what kind of a, you know, we don't want the, the contingency money to be taken up uh, by COVID-related expenses when there's money that's out there designed uh, to help people that have had COVID-related expenses. So.
And Mr. Chair, specific.
It's in the Plymouth County trustees.
Yeah, specific to that, uh, on that COVID response. In, in Plymouth County, Plymouth County is the only county that has applied and actually received the COVID money instead of the state getting it and doling it out. In fact, the state inspector general's been trying to get their hands on that money to dole it out. The only other, the only other community was Boston, the city of Boston, that actually got that direct money from the federal government. Uh, I did actually speak to uh, one of the commissioners, uh, cause I, I know Dan Pallada who works, who is uh, works for one of the OP, a different OPM. And I, I talked to one of the other commissioners about that, and that money is available. So um, hopefully we can get a piece of that to help reimburse.
Great. Uh, Greg, uh, Stevens, you had a question?
Yeah. So if the, the delivery is now looking to be in February, would that mean we're trying to move in the February vacation timeframe?
No, the, the delivery would be before February. Um, but yes, we would be trying to, to doing all the, everything at the end for the um, for the, right after the February vacation. So there would be a piece that would need to be done during February vacation.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you don't mind, a question came in on the comments uh, from one person who was seconded by another about the equipment. We have purchased the equipment. The equipment is part of the purchase of the project. Uh, but we are not mowing ourselves yet because we have not taken ownership of those fields because the punch list has not been satisfied by what's called the owner, which is us. So when we're satisfied that the fences are done and all the work that has to be done on those fields, uh, has been done to our satisfaction per our landscape architect, then we will accept the fields. And at that point, we'll take over. Now, as the budget subcommittee knows, we were talking budget earlier. We had wanted to put in a full-time groundskeeper for next year. We decided we couldn't afford that, that, that school class sizes were more important to the budget subcommittee and the school committee. So we have a half-time groundskeeper who'll be doing some work, and we also have our maintenance staff uh, that'll be taking on that task under the direction of, of Jim Hutchinson, our facilities director. So we really think we can do it. Once we take ownership of that field, uh, right now, uh, Mountain View Landscaping is still responsible. Uh, and Fontaine Brothers is still financially responsible for the mowing of those fields. And I believe as of today, uh, they've just hired a local landscaper, Spillane Nursery, to come in and do the cutting until such time as the owner, meaning us, are satisfied with the punch list and that we can move forward. So we do have equipment. We're, equipment's ready to go. Uh, our facilities people have gone through training on the equipment through Norfolk Equipment. And, but we will not put it in place until such time as, again, we're satisfied that it's uh, something we want to pay a hundred percent for. Yep. This is that question from our community.
And the other piece is that we purchased the equipment that's needed for the turf field. Um, primarily because a lot of us have seen, who've, who've been involved in um, sports. When you go to another community, a lot of communities bought the turf field equipment after the fact. We made sure it was part of the um, the project itself, so we would have that equipment on site for our custodial staff and um, eventually for everyone to use to fix the fields. Any other questions about that in particular? Then seeing no one, I will move on. Uh, Brian, before you go, can you, uh, just to maybe jump ahead real quick. But can you talk about the donation to uh, the school lunch program just really quickly?
Yeah, we had, Mr. Chair threw you in and to the member of the committee. We did have an anonymous person who chooses to remain anonymous. Um, who has, uh, every year we have a, a list of, of overdue lunch accounts. And there is a list that's about, I don't know, about eighteen or twenty students strong who happen to be seniors in high school. Uh, we happen to have a uh, an anonymous friend, uh, who chose to pay off the bill of all those people and the money they owe to the cafeteria lunch fund. So it's an anonymous person who we all know and love.
All right. Well, that's fantastic. Um, the only other thing I have on our list right now is just a reminder to everybody about the superintendent's evaluation. Uh, that's, uh, you know, as soon as we get everything done, I would, to, to be totally honest with you, it'd be my preference to do the superven, superintendent's evaluation in person in a, in a meeting so, um, that way. But if we need to, it'll be done via Zoom, um, or this uh, service. Though I just want everyone to know that, StreamYard. Any other questions? Does anyone have anything else for me? Otherwise, I'm gonna ask that Mr. Oakley come back and we can move to adjourn. I do want to thank the superintendent and Sarah, uh, for their hard work, especially, um, in getting, starting that conversation with us, and I appreciate it. Uh, I'm gonna take a couple of seconds really quickly and see if anyone else has anything. And also just check with uh, Sean to see if anyone else had put anything on the program. I see nothing. So with that, does any member have anything they want to bring up? Mr. Oakley?
Yeah, I just wanted to say it's, it's great to see so many people participating, um, seeing the people join up and the questions coming in. Um, it's awesome. So thank you, everyone, for doing that.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Other than that, to share, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It will require a roll call vote because I can't do it any other way. Mr. G Menoni?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Hi.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and wishes everybody uh, safety and we'll see you soon. Thank you very much, everybody.
All right, take care.